The Command and General Government Operation Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, March 4th, the time now is 1:34. Welcome to everyone, well-connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience for commenting on the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Public notice, notice for this public hearing were disseminated through email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, February 23rd, and then on March 2nd, and again, today is March 4th, and it is 1:34. The bill we will be hearing this afternoon is Bill Number 249-36, due or introduced by Senator Telo Tidigui, co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlai, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and Senator Brown. An Act to amend Section 1D of Chapter 5, Public Law 36-54, relevant to prioritizing veteran service by exempting Guam Office of Veterans Affairs OVA from the Bureau of Budget Management Research Allotment Release Control and Control and Appropriations Reserve Authority and by authorizing the Guam OVA to utilize the unexpendated balance of funds appropriate to the agency pursuant to Public Law 335-99. The rules of conduct for this hearing, this Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Anybody who is in this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing. As a matter of fact, we will mute you first, then I'll make that announcement or give fair warning, then we'll move on. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times, not engaging in any activity during the hearing. While you're having a drink or having a snack, I have no problem with that one. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your removal from the meeting live stream. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this afternoon's session, hearing, and let me recognize all our colleagues that are here. We have the author of the bill, Senator Telo Tidigui. We have Speaker Theresa Terlai, Senator Sabina Perez, and we have Senator Amanda Shelton. We also have, let me see, looking at the list here, we have the Director of Bureau of Budget Management Research, Director Lester Carlson. We have Mr. Jose Sanovsin. I think he's the Chairman of the Commission, Veterans Commission. Hi there, Uncle Joe. I noticed we have a bill conducted there. Folks, if you're here to testify for this bill, turn on the video so we can see you, otherwise we're going to take you off. And we have Tim Uno that's on the list also, alright? Other than that, we will now begin with testimony from, as a matter of fact, an opening statement from Senator Telo Tidigui, the author of the bill. Senator, please.
Okay. Wenison Huffaday, Mr. Chair, thank you so much for scheduling this public hearing on Bill 249. And I'd also like to thank my co-sponsors, Senator Speaker Theresa Terlai, Senator Perez, and Senator Joanne Brown, and hopefully, Mr. Chair, have you on as a co-sponsor as well, along with Senator Amanda Shelton who's here today. Thank you, Senators, for being here and for the opportunity, Mr. Chair, to summarize the measure. Mr. Chair, Bill 249 amends the FY22 Budget Act, Public Law 36-54, by proposing to exempt the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research Allotment Release Control and Authority. Bill 249 also authorizes the Veterans Office to access any funds that they were appropriated to the agency through FY21 Budget Act, Public Law 35-99, which remain unspent. Mr. Chair, although the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs had 98,446 of its 731,692 budget in FY21 set aside as an appropriation reserve, according to the Appropriations Reserve Report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2021, the Guam OVA notified the 36 Guam Legislature in January of 2022 of a payment to the Guam Power Authority for prior year obligations totaling 3,588. Public Law 35-54, the FY22 Budget Act, Chapter 13, Section 20, authorizes government agencies to use FY22 appropriations to cover prior year's obligations, provided doing so doesn't negatively impact their current operations and that notice is provided to the legislature five days prior to making payment. Mr. Chair, if approved, Bill 249 exempts the Guam Office Veterans Affairs from the Bureau Budget and Management Research Allotment Release Control and Appropriations Reserve Authority, which is currently authorized for other entities, including the University of Guam, GCC, Guam Memorial Hospital, GVB, and the Guam Election Commission. Through this measure, the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs will receive its full FY22 budget, including any funds it had, any funds was authorized to receive in FY21 and which remain available. Mr. Chair, based on a review of Bill 249 by the legal bureau, whose comments I received at 11:50 a.m. today, I intend to work with your committee to add the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to the list of agencies covered by GCA 13031. This approach will clear up any confusion or misinterpretation of the bill's intent as the amendment would codify the allotment release exemption for the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs going forward. Please note, Mr. Chair, while BBMR fiscal note on Bill 249 recognizes that the FY22 budget already authorizes a continuing appropriation provision as provided for in Section 2011 Public Law 3654. The same provision, unlike the language proposed in Bill 249, doesn't restrict the governor from transferring any appropriation balance to the Guam Office Veterans Affairs may have from FY21. Bill 249 clearly restricts the carryover funds from being transferred and prioritizes these resources specifically for veteran services. In closing, Mr. Chair, based on the revised fiscal note on Bill 249 from BBMR dated March 3rd, 2022, the agency informed the legislature that for FY2021, and I quote, "The Guam OVA received an appropriation of 581,692 from the general fund, and that as of September 30th, 2021, the Guam OVA's total expenditure As such, based on this expenditure level, there are no unexpected, unexpended balance of funds appropriated to OVA as it had been fully expended." Mr. Chairman, between the initial fiscal note submitted on February 14th, 2022, and its revised fiscal note sent to the legislature within 24 hours of today's public hearing, it appears that 114,646.25 of the Guam OVA's 731,692 total authorized funding level for FY21, inclusive of the 150,000 transferred from the governor's office, was transferred out of the Guam OVA. For an example, so you take 581,692, which was appropriated to the Office of Veterans Affairs, and then you take the 150,000 transferred from the governor's office to the Office of Veterans Affairs. That's a total of 731,690 for FY21 to the Office of Veterans Affairs. 98,446 appropriation reserve as of September 30, 21. So that's a balance now of 617,000, what, I mean, the expenditure was 617,045.75 for the total expenditures in BBMR. So what happened to the 114,640.25? That's what I come up when I'm doing the math, and I'm glad that BBMR is here today so they can clarify what happened to the 114,646. With this, Mr. Chair, it's clear to me, the info provided by BBMR in its revised fiscal note only strengthens the case for Bill 249. Despite authorizing 731,692 in funding, inclusive of the 150,000 transferred from the governor's office for the Guam OVA in fiscal 21, 114,646 was not provided to the agency to assist with services for veterans. Mr. Chair, I look forward to the discussion, including any additional amendments that may be needed going forward, ensuring our local VA office is provided every dollar it is given through its annual budget. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair, and for the opportunity to present this overall view on Bill 249. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Now we'll proceed and we'll begin with the Director Carlson, and then followed by Jose Sanovsin, retired Marine. Sir, Mr. Carlson, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Mr. Uggan joining us today?
He should be. We've been calling him. They sent us an email that they're going to send their testimony, but when I talked to their staff, they said they weren't in support of the bill, but I need to see their testimony first before I even make that a confirmed statement, because that's what they told me personally. But we're going to contact their office to get them to come onboard. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. If I may provide some context to Senator Tidigui's opening statement, the revised fiscal note was done to bifurcate the appropriation provided to the Office of Veterans Affairs into fiscal 21 of 581,692. That was the appropriation. So when we take a look at the expenditures, they expended over their appropriated amount by somewhere in the neighborhood of about close to $30,000. What Mr. Uggan had requested of the governor in January or February of '21, five months into the fiscal year, was a request to settle a Department of Labor back wage obligation. That obligation was $97,111.21. If that funding had come out of the appropriation level for the Office of Veterans Affairs only in FY21, they would have lost probably 20-some percent of their operating budget just to be able to take care of this obligation, which by the way, was paid. So the Office of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Director Tim Uggan, approached the governor for assistance, and working with BBMR, we were able to transfer monies from the governor's office, excuse me, to the Office of Veterans Affairs to supplement their budgetary requirements, including this Department of Labor obligation of $97,111.21. So it was through cooperation, interaction, and a willingness to address Veterans Affairs' needs that the governor transferred money to meet the unanticipated. Again, this could be viewed, and should be, I guess, as a prior year obligation, but there wasn't any authority in '21, I believe. We just needed to find the money, because it was, we had a, if we didn't pay it right away, there would be penalties, like 2% a month, and you know, we don't want to do that kind of stuff. So there was no transfer out of any money. There was a transfer in, a generous accommodation by the governor. And for the record, the executive budget request for FY21 for the Office of Veterans Affairs was $728,749. The amount appropriated by the legislature in FY21 was 581,692. You know, there was a significant shortfall in the funding for the Office of Veterans Affairs. And there was an accommodation that could or could not have been acted upon by the governor to provide up to $300,000 to supplement their needs. She didn't do it until it became absolutely necessary that she had to because of the Department of Labor obligation. So we are not in support at all of this bill. We believe that we've always made Veterans Affairs and any other agencies priorities, you know, we've met their priorities. Case in point, it's kind of why I wish Mr. Uggan was here. We noted in the fiscal note that not only did we put 15% of their appropriation reserve, we also took all of their travel and equipment and capital outlay funding in reserve, but it's available upon request. So Mr. Uggan and his ASO, I believe, traveled to, I believe, Washington DC recently. So what did we do when we got their TAs? We went ahead to release funds that were held in reserve for travel to pay for their travel costs. And this is how, sir, we reduced the deficit. It's fiscal controls that don't impair the agency's ability to do what they need to do. And in the case, case in point for Bill 249, there was more of an example of how we address needs as opposed to not addressing the needs. So the other thing that I'd like to point out is the other entities that are outside of BBMR's allotment control, as stated by the author, are almost exclusively autonomous agencies with boards and commissions. And I will say for the record that the Office of Veterans Affairs, like the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, is under the governor's office. We are a division, a branch underneath the governor's office. And the governor, I spoke with her yesterday, she's also opposed to this because she believes that this is an executive function and that we have, especially in the case of FY21, with the budget that really was well short of what they asked for, you know, we came to their assistance. And again, in '22, we had funds put in reserve. When Mr. Uggan was approved to go travel off-island, those funds remained available to him. So the funds are available. Nothing was transferred out. The math that was provided earlier, you know, I can't understand how that might have been derived, but I'm here to let you know that the prior fiscal note wanted to make sure, or the revised fiscal note wanted to make sure of the difference between the $581,000 appropriation and the $150,000 infusion. That's how you get to 731. So they didn't have 731 appropriated by the legislature. They only had 581. And because of the infusion, they had the resources to over-expend what it was that was provided because of the assistance from the governor. So, sir, with all due respect to everybody, we believe that this system, in particular as it relates to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, works, and it works well. We don't believe the bill is necessary, and there is not anything that could be provided from '21 expenditures because they over-expended. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Master, retired Marine Jose Sanovsin, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Senators, and everyone listening in. Thank you for joining this afternoon. Mr. Carlson, I thank you very much for availing yourself and making us understand more of what took place with regards to why this bill is now being introduced. I am the chairperson for the Guam Veterans Commission and also the president for the third Marine Division Guam Chapter. I am having a hard time breathing because the topic that we're discussing this afternoon, I really take very personal. The issue at stake here is actually an indicator that the Guam Veterans Affairs Office has been for many years not provided the funding or the budget that it truly needs. And so we fall in place with what we're seeing now. For Mr. Carlson, I think it has not changed that each agency, to include the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, is subject to provide your office and the governor a spending plan for that particular fiscal year. So my question goes into, how did it end up that they overspend? How did they end up that we have to pay $97,000 to the Department of Labor for whatever reason? Is it for overtime? Or is it for a individual they hired from the Department of Labor but not able to provide funding to as it was appropriated for 2021? The Guam Veterans Affairs Office is the agency that probably received the smallest budget. The prior year obligation for 2021, I did not see anywhere on the 2022 budget appropriation. Because I want to know, did the 3,588 that was supposed to be paid to the utility identified as a prior year obligation? And what else for FY22 has been identified as prior year? So what we're doing here, and you know, kudos to the governor and BBMR. You know, we're rescuing an agency that has been shortfall for many years. And it's an indicator that the services are much needed. And so I'm going to take one example. Did the travel for the director, was that appropriated for the 2022 budget? I'm just asking, because if not, then again, we're failing. Was it planned ahead of time? And I'm just thinking that it wasn't. In saying, you know, I want to go out initially, we're saying, I want to support this bill, 249, for the sole purpose of ensuring that any future under appropriation, and it's always going to be for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, any future misappropriation or underappropriation of funds to this agency, that they be allowed to utilize every bit, penny that has been appropriated to this particular agency. I was with that state office for two years at 500,000 to 631,000 appropriation budget a year, and it's not enough. But what we were able to do was bring in some volunteers, go around and solicit for paint, material, just so we could upkeep our obligations to our veterans and their families. It cannot work that way. For as much as we want it to, it can't. We have to provide a sufficient amount of budget so that this agency could function. And here's my other question. If the utility bill, in this case, the power bill of 3,588 was not paid and was deemed prior year, was the utility, was the power disconnected, and was a reconnection fee had to be paid for it to be reconnected? So, you know, I hear, Mr. Carlson, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I mean, your statement, very much true. The system is in place for a reason, and it's to protect the budget, to protect the funding, the overspending, the neglect, and whatnot. But at the same token, I still see that something is taking place within the way the budget is being appropriated for individuals to travel unexpectedly. Second, I just want to say that the 968,000 for FY22 that has been allocated for this agency with a reserve of 207,251, I am hoping that Mr. Uggan had submitted their spending plan of 242,151 every quarter. And right now, we're toward the end of the second quarter. This month is the end of the second quarter. And I'm still looking for permanent employees to be hired down at the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, the cemetery specifically. I'm still being made aware that there's only one permanent personnel down there working. That's not how we should operate. You know, the people that have passed before us have entrusted us to take care of them when they pass, and it's our job. It's my job. The rest of y'all, I don't know how you see it, but that's why I have the passion to continue to do whatever I could to ensure that our veterans and their family are laid to rest with much dignity and respect for the hardships and the duties that they provided us so that we could continue to enjoy our freedom that we enjoy today. The cemetery has a lot of maintenance. This 968,000 is not enough, but it's good enough for now, if it's used wisely. But if we're going to end up saying, well, at the end of the fiscal year, we did not spend 242,000 because we were not able to hire personnel, or we were not able to get a contractor on board to help us rectify many of the deficiencies that we're having down at the Guam State Veterans Cemetery, then shame on us. But with my end statement, because the way things are going, I will support this bill, and I hope that we could continue to work between the administration and the legislature and the Guam Veterans Commission to continue to find solution to the issues that's been plaguing this office for the longest years. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Uncle Joe. No, we have Tim Uno. Mr. Bill Conley, please turn on your video because I want to make sure you're still there. Alright, Tim, go ahead, Tim.
Wenison, Mr. Chair, thanks for letting me say a little upfront. I just want to say that I learned quite a bit just in this discussion hearing from Mr. Carlson, of course, and fellow veteran Jose Sanovsin. Thank you for those comments. And it sounds to me like the Office of Veterans Affairs here is definitely not underfunded. I mean, it's underfunded. I am in support of this bill. Anything that goes towards appropriating additional funds that will help the Office of Veterans Affairs and especially the services they help the Office of Veterans Affairs and especially the services they provide for veterans. Uh, I'll, I'll put whatever I can to support, support that effort. Um, so upfront, I, I support this bill. Um, I'm learning a lot of the, the background information, especially about what Mr. Jose brought up about, um, the Department of Labor, Labor, Labor Funds that was required, uh, to be paid. I'm not sure the Department of Labor falls also along with the Office of Veterans Affairs, but I'm kinda curious as to uh, how the Office of Veteran Affairs is requesting funds to support the Department of Labor. So I'm, I'm, uh, unclear on that. But, um, yeah, I just appreciate the time, um, Mr. Chair, for, for you just letting me, you know, speak from the heart and, and say that, uh, anything that goes towards, um, appropriating additional funds to the Office of Veterans Affairs here in Guam. That'll, uh, that will better facilitate additional services for veterans. Uh, I, I wanna support. So I don't have that much, but I just wanted to bring that up and thank you, uh,
Thank you, Tim.
Yep. Uh, sir, could I, uh, Mr. Chair, may, may I just provide a little bit more color on the ninety-seven thousand dollar obligation?
All right, please, please do, before I move to Mr. Bill Conley.
Thank, thank you for that. Uh, it, I, I think it just bears, uh, a little bit of discussion. This is US Department of Labor. Uh, and there was an employee who filed a grievance. Um, and the, uh, US Department of Labor, uh, basically found him, um, in the right. And as I mentioned, this was, uh, but these kind of things are going on, you know, they're, they're kinda like, uh, confidential until they're, they're, uh, they're done, the, the nature of the, uh, the investigation. So I didn't know about it until the report was done and the obligation and the findings of, uh, US Department of Labor wage in our division decision was provided to Mr. Tim Uggan. That's when Mr. Uggan went to the governor, cause he didn't have the money to pay for this. So it was, uh, you know, years, uh, the, the employee, uh, the timeframe, this was, you know, years ago. So I don't think anybody knew, um, to, uh, Mr. uh, San Augustine and Mr. Ono's point, uh, of whether or not, uh, you know, this uh, obligation was known at the time when the budget was done. I, I'm pretty sure it wasn't. But on top of that, there was also a finding by the same division that there were three employees that were due, uh, comp time in lieu of overtime because they had worked hours in excess of, uh, the forty hours and were not compensated. So there's, uh, one individual that, um, uh, basically got two hundred and twenty-two hours of comp time. Another individual, forty-seven point, uh, forty-seven hours, another one twenty-two. So, you know, uh, this also impaired to some degree, if they took their comp time, the ability to provide the services at the veteran cemetery because these individuals have every right to take their comp time, uh, you know, provided, you know, it, it, it's not in a, in a bad time, but uh, you know, I worked with, uh, uh, just, just an Augustine, um, in the prior administration. And when he was over at Veterans Affairs and, you know, we've always tried to, to do what we can to, to be able to provide the services and he did a good job of submitting, as you mentioned, volunteers and donations to be able to, uh, uh, correct longstanding deficiencies. And we, we all know that there are deficiencies and we're all working together to try to get them um, addressed so that, uh, the, the, the set, uh, we can start looking at federal funding, but, you know, we have to, you know, cure these deficiencies. Um, there's no doubt that, uh, in fiscal twenty-one, the budget, uh, just the budget that the, you know, for the Veterans Affairs was inconsistent with prior years and certainly inconsistent with, uh, the current year. It, it was, it was short. Um, so there, there was a lot of things that, uh, were stacked against the Department of Veterans Affairs in, in twenty-one, but notwithstanding all of that, they had obligations to be met. There was an infusion of cash from the governor to meet those obligations. And this year, thankfully, you know, the budget for this year for the visiting public is nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, you know, significantly more than what was available to them in twenty-one, you know, so we're very grateful for that, uh, that support in FY twenty-two. Uh, to Mr. Ono's, uh, comment and also to, uh, um, Mr. San Agustin's comment. Uh, to be clear, I understand your position, but there isn't anything available in twenty-one. So, you know, one of the, one of the, uh, uh, tenants of bill two-forty-nine is to provide unexpended money. There isn't any, I, you know, I just, it is what it is, you know? Thank you, sir.
All right, and thank you. Um, I'll ask now, uh, Mr. Bill Conley, Conell, Bill? You still there, Bill? Let me see. I know Bill's there. Bill, you're there? All right, Bill, you're next. I'd like to, uh, go ahead and unmute. Thank you. Go unmute one more time. Uh, wait a minute, you're still muted. Oh, and there you go, you're in, you're in now.
Okay, uh, half a day, uh, Senators and, um, those listening. My name is Bill Conley. I am Chairman of Guam Veterans, I mean Guam, uh, US Air Force Veterans Association. I was former Chairman of the Guam Commission for two terms. And I'm retired from United States Air Force. I'm very concerned of the VA office. I support bill two-four-nine, that's thirty-six. The VA office should never, ever rely on volunteers to get their job done. They should never have to go out and bathe or paint or trash cans or whatever it is to get their job done. Since I arrived in Ireland back in ninety-one, I've attended almost every Veterans meeting. And this budget has always been the top topic. The VA office has never had whatever they need to get things done. Never. We're looking at a chicken feed and frail budget to serve over eighteen thousand veterans and their families. Eighteen thousand veterans and their families to pay salaries, maintain the VA cemetery. That is, by the way, is almost full. Now, I don't know if anything's been done to supplement more spaces to fix their equipment, to pay their utilities. To take anything away from the VA office, any budget, any, any penny away from the VA office is not right. How do you do this to our veterans and their families who have fought for our freedom today? Did you know? Did you know? That we provide, the veterans and their families provide close to two hundred million dollars into this economy? We're talking about a, a billion dollar chicken feed budget? Compensation, death benefits in FY twenty. Guam veterans and their fans will see over sixty-five million dollars, over sixty-five million dollars. Chapter thirty-five. Education benefits for dependents and, and spouses. One million dollars. Benefits for GI Bill. Eight million dollars. We're talking about seventy-three million dollars or more that they pump into the economy. Not including the time in pay, not including social security and other benefits. None. So we're talking about, they are pumping in close to two hundred million dollars a year here. And we're talking about chicken feed, one million dollar budget? There. It's very telling the other day. It's very telling Friday. The VA office provided a budget report to the VA Commission last Friday. They only have four hundred and some dollars left in their account. One lifter. They only have two lifters. One lifter is non-functional. The other one is close to being non-functional. Two of their, their, their trucks aren't working. It's a failure. It really is a failure. It is so sad that we have to take any, any penny away from them to do their job. Right now, I understand that some of the, some of the, uh, office workers are having their spouses volunteer down here to get the job done at the cemetery. The Eastegania Cemetery, right now, is not cut. The, the grass is almost knee-high. When I went by there the other day. The director position at the Veterans Affairs Office is like a musical chair. They put different people there every time. I understand now that, um, the current director may, may be transferred to another organization. And we have acting, an acting, another acting director there. This is some of the problems. Three weeks ago was down there, the coffee machine is not working. So what are we trying to do? When you cut off a penny from them, you're not only cutting off a leg, you're cutting both, both legs off. And those poor workers down here are trying their best to maintain and serve over eighteen thousand veterans and their families. How can they do that with this kind of budget? And then you keep taking some away or, or propose to take some away through the reserves. Can't do this. We cannot. I was looking at the, this, all the cemeteries in the United States of America. The minimum wage, the minimum pay for a cemetery worker is between fourteen and fifteen dollars an hour. We pay these guys, I believe, ten dollars an hour to work the whole place. And then, by the way, you only have one person down here doing the job. And the rest are volunteers from all over the place. We can't do this. If you guys are sincere about helping our veterans and helping our families, their families and award them for the services that they have done to defend our country so that we are doing what we are doing today. I implore you to not stop a penny out of their budget and increase their budget up to three million dollars per year. Thank you.
Thank you, Conell.
You're welcome.
All right, um, before I ask the, uh, my colleagues to, uh, ask questions. I don't see Mr. Uggan yet here. I'll just give you fair warning. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, at the end of this, I'm gonna call a recess. I'm not gonna adjourn this hearing. We're gonna continue this hearing. We're gonna move it to the fifteenth. There are many questions I'd like to ask and, and for information for everyone. Uh, in FY twenty-two, the administration asked for seven hundred and sixty-eight. The, uh, appropriation for the budget was nine oh eight. And, uh, right now for FY twenty-twenty-three, the request is nine sixty-eight. I, I, I look forward to it going up, if not be at nine sixty-eight. And I have no reasons, I, I'm, one of my major concerns is just like it was mentioned earlier, uh, I'd like to see the VA here to answer for what's going on. Uh, before I end up calling an oversight here on it for, for, on the appropriate side, okay? So I just wanna make sure we understand that at the end of, if any question's gonna be asked unless the author wants. We wait until after, until we recess and we, and then we start, not start all over, cause I'm not gonna ask Mr. Lester to come and speak again. He can listen on and Mr. San Augustine and Mr. Ono and Mr. Conley can listen on. But I, I wanna hear for what's going on at, at, at the VA office. I am very concerned. Uh, because I go down there often enough also. Uh, Mr. Carson, you wanted to make a comment, sir?
Thank you much, sir. Um, to Mr. Conley's point, um, you know, and, uh, Mr. San Augustine's point. Please, um, understand, uh, as former cabinet members, um, you're, you, you guys are aware of how, uh, things operate and, and the concept of, of putting funds in reserve. The fiscal note is clear. It says, please note that the imposed reserve is not a permanent reduction and is available for release with justification from the part, from the department. Case in point, when the travel occurred recently. Another case in point, sir, that was brought up about the lifters and the trucks. Uh, if there were, if the department, uh, puts out, uh, an RFP to replace the equipment, the funds will be available to them. It's not a funding issue for the equipment that was cited as being deficient, the lifters and, and the vehicles. The funds are here. Their funds are here, but, uh, the, the department needs to be able to, to forward the requests as noted for the capital outlay and the equipment needs, and we will certainly fund it. Not a problem. Thank you, sir.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, I'd like to also recognize Senator Brown joined us, but Senator Tello, uh, as I gave the, the warning order, so to speak, uh, we're gonna do a recess after this so we can get the VA involved. I'm very concerned what's going on.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
And, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And at first, thank you to everyone who came to testify. I, I definitely hear, uh, your concerns and, um, but this, what this bill does, Mr. Chair, it's very simple. It allows that the Veterans Office receive their full allotment every month, whatever they're given through the budget bill. It's divided by twelve, provided to the, to the Veterans Affairs. And at no point can the governor take many out of the veterans or, or transfer it out. She has the authority to do that with any other agency. As far as Mr. Carson's mentioning that the only agencies that have this exemption are, um, autonomous. That's not true. Mayors, Legislature, OPA, these are areas that are part of thirteen, I think thirteen zero-two in the law that allows, uh, that exemption for these agencies to not be controlled by the governor. This, Mr. Chair, and, and great, I'm glad to hear that, you know, their intention is never to, uh, not give them their full allotment to give them at a later date. But what this bill is gonna do, and I hope to do, is codify to ensure that this governor or any governor after that, to ensure that no money is taken out from the veterans to be set aside to be either used later or, or even transferred out. Because right now, the law allows the governor to transfer. It's as simple as that. Now, if there's any spending that was done, uh, in, in the Veterans Office that's not clear or the, the labor issue that came up, that, that's a different story. But this bill is cut and dry. It focuses on this budget FY twenty-two. And it, of course, twenty-one, but now we're saying, now, uh, Lester is saying that there's no money there. But twenty-two and further on, no transfer authority from the governor and they shall get their allotment. It's as simple as that. And I understand, Mr. Chair, you would like to bring the veterans in to discuss other things like the broken, uh, uh, cars or the inability to provide more, um, room for, um, uh, the graves. There, there are not enough room. What are we gonna do? I don't know what else you're gonna talk about, maybe funding, but there is one question I have to Lester. Lester, you said that in FY twenty-one, the, um, the budget was five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. That's what was given to, um, Office of Veterans Affairs. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then a hundred and fifty thousand was transferred into the Veterans Affairs Office by the Governor's Office, correct?
That's correct.
And that total comes out to seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, because you're not looking at what it was that Tim Uggan asked the governor to do, which is to fund the Department of Labor obligation. So that took ninety-seven thousand dollars right off the bat.
Okay, so we'll subtract, but, so we're back at seven hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred.
You really can't look at it from that perspective, Senator? You can't.
I'm looking at what you provided in our fiscal note, right?
I'm looking at, are you looking at the revised one?
Yes, I sure am. Absolutely.
Where, where does it say seven thirty-one?
It, it was very clear here that, oh, no, it doesn't. All I do is take as of September, um, thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, total exemption was six hundred and seventeen thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. That's what was said. Right.
Expenditures.
Okay.
Right.
Now, if you're taking FY twenty-one, we're talking about FY twenty-one at five hundred and eighty-one plus one hundred and fifty. Now, if you're taking FY twenty-one, we're talking about FY twenty-one at five hundred and eighty-one plus one hundred and fifty, you have seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. And if you take the exemption of six hundred and seventeen, which was expended, you have a remaining balance of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars left over. Now, you take your ninety-seven thousand that you were talking about to pay labor, you still have a remaining balance of about seventeen thousand. But you're saying to us, there's no money in the Veterans Fund for FY twenty-one. It's been expended. Where's that seventeen thousand?
Okay, so real quick, Senator, I'm sure you're very well aware that as of September thirtieth, there are bills that come in for power and water and other operational expenses that as we close out any fiscal year, there's two or three months of, you know, bills that come in that are attributed to operations in twenty-one. So the snapshot of September thirtieth doesn't include the power bill that was received in like October for the month of September, because that bill wasn't received yet. Now, if you were to take your logic, which is okay, you take the five eighty-one and you take the sixty, the ninety-seven thousand, and the over expenditure was about thirty thousand. Ninety-seven plus the thirty-something thousand dollar, you know, over expenditure gets you pretty much close to the hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, there's still remaining balance. Okay, well, you know, since you provided this fiscal note just a day ago, you know, you would think that the numbers are up to par. But you're showing us six hundred and seventeen in expenditures. So moving forward, Mr. Chair, thank you for that, Lester. But you know, that's a good question to ask, Mr. Chair, later when we get Mr. Uggan here, if there is any balance in their account and where did that seventeen thousand dollars go? As we move, Mr. Chair, into FY twenty-two, our budget bill clearly indicates that, you know, any leftover funding from FY twenty-two, they can expend it as well as the twenty-two budget. Any funding left over can be fully spent. What we're looking here is just to ensure that our veterans are kept whole and that there are no any opportunity for any transfer of money out that we, as the legislature appropriates. But don't get me wrong, the governor is free, like she did recently, provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Office of Veterans Affairs. With the federal funding coming in, I'm so glad to see that, you know, there is opportunity to use money in that area. Whether it comes from art money or CARES Act money, it's there. The other one is, yeah, that's why I'm surprised too, because this fiscal note just came in today at eleven-thirty, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that why the ninety-seven from Department of Labor was not incorporated into this fiscal note. But once again, Mr. Chair, I'll just save the rest for my closing and allow my colleagues to speak. But it's a very simple bill. It just allows, Mr. Chair, for the exemption for the Veterans Affairs, just like the legislature, the mayor's, OPA's office, GBB, and other areas that are given that exemption. And I think our veterans deserve that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope we don't delay.
Yeah, not an issue on that. Senator Tello, I only gave that I wanted the VA here just to make it very clear. I'm not going to ask about cemeteries. I want to know about where you're spending your money. You can't be claiming you need to relieve a reserve. And no different what Mr. Bill Kundal has mentioned, is that it's about the proper spending and spending it for where you need to go. That's why the grass is too long. I'd be curious to know why. And he's right. We don't need to beg. Veterans are not known to beg. We just go and do what we need to do. That I know for a fact. We need to get something done, get it done. But in the issue of the recessing this bill, to hear more is to explain where the money is at, because I just got the email from him, and that's not satisfactory. I'm just getting it a few minutes while we're in this hearing. I need to see him present. I need to hear him talk about it, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree. I mean, I agree with you that there are unanswered questions. And we're going to have a budget, a budget bill pretty soon, or even talk about the budget. But right now, this bill is clearly just doing one thing. And it allows them that same exemption as some of the other agencies, that no transfer authority. That's as simple as that, Mr. Chair. But I do look forward to that budget question, yeah.
It's just that simple. Thank you, Senator Tello. Does anybody else would like to ask any question of the folks that have testified? If not, we're going to recess until, until the fifteenth. Madam Speaker, you want to ask a question?
Yes, thank you. I would, I'd like to ask of the current panel, especially if they're not going to be allowed to speak at the next hearing. So first of all, thank you for testifying, especially you veterans who are here and that have been very active in the Veterans Commission and in the affairs of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. So, yeah, first of all, I want to acknowledge or repeat what the chair said, and that is that the governor requested seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six oh five for FY twenty-two. The legislature appropriated nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and five. And we just, that's two hundred thousand more than the governor's request. And the governor's request, and that ended up to be about four hundred thousand over the FY twenty-twenty-one appropriation. And I agree with you who say, still, this is not enough. However, I want to thank you, Mr. Jose Sinagstein, for saying that it's enough if used wisely. And I believe this bill is showing that it's also enough if used in full, right? And we've seen from Mr. Carlson's testimony, and thank you, Mr. Carlson, that that they can spend more than this, and there are things that are going to come up that we didn't even anticipate when we put the nine six eight for FY twenty-two. So we will always have to work together to, you know, be flexible, to add more if necessary. But what I'm worried about is if we hold the reserve of, you know, the Veterans Affairs Office, almost anything that we have asked them to do, or, you know, maybe you veterans have asked them to do, they come back and say, we don't have funds, or we're waiting for funds, or our funds are being held. And I just feel like if this bill would remove at least one impediment, that this amount is being held, then they can plan, and they should be able to plan for the entire fiscal year. And I don't agree, so I put it in the chat here. I took from the, so while we've been talking, the Office of Veterans Affairs submitted testimony. And the third point in their testimony is that the allotment reserve is in place to cover any shortfalls incurred by the department at the year end. Well, I don't agree with that. It's not for shortfalls at the year end. It's to plan all year long and to spend in, under the amount that you've been appropriated, yes. And they should not overexpend. I'm not endorsing that. I'm endorsing planned expenditure all year round, not to have to wait until the end of the year for that, what is it, you know, the equipment that Mr. Kundal says that they need, right? If they need it, and they have enough in their budget to get it, I want them to be able to get it now, not to have to wait. And that's why I fully support this bill, the part that says, release from reserve everything that they might need. Their budget's so small already. Give them everything, let them plan. Of course, if they overexpend, that's a whole other story, Mr. Carlson, and I don't know what you're going to do about that with, you know. We've got to, you know, those are your cabinet members, so we have to, you know, talk to them, advise them, and maybe, you know, whatever, to prevent overexpenditure. Or if they need additional funds for very special things, of course, to make that request. I hate to see veterans begging. I don't think it's, I don't think it's what our government should force them to do. It's definitely not what we're intending. And I think we should, we all intend the same thing, and that is, give them the money, let them plan it out, let them spend it all. And if that is still short, and they can give you a good rationale, Mr. Carlson, and give our chairperson a good rationale, you know, we will work together to find what else, you know, they need. But if they need something to fix that cemetery right now, I say, give it to them now. Don't let them wait and beg to the end of the year. This is just a small amount, you know, for them, that I think, I think there's no dispute that they could use and they could, especially when we're saying there's only one employee down at that cemetery, you know. So the employee, the equipment, everything altogether. So, yeah, I would support that. As to the FY twenty-one and whether the funds are still there or not, if they're not there, then fine. If they're there, then all this bill says is give it to them, right? And, yeah, I too, you know, if the fiscal note had shown that the total expenditure is not really six hundred and seventeen, that more came in after that, then, you know, maybe we need an updated fiscal note. But obviously, that's FY twenty-one. I'm trying to address what happens in FY twenty-two as well, and that's right now. So I would say, let's do what we can to release the money to them right now. And thank you again for those who testified.
Thank you. Senator Sabina Perez, do you have any questions you'd like to post?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have the same sentiments that, you know, a proper spending is definitely needed, and we really need to have, keep tabs on how the money is spent, because it really breaks my heart to hear that, you know, the reps, the money that we appropriated to go to representatives has not been utilized for that. And, you know, we need to get to the bottom of this to see, you know, how can we further support them with the money that's been appropriated in addition to finding more funding? And so looking, you know, I do look forward to the budget hearing, because I also see a downturn in the federal grants. That's not including ARPA funds, but there has been a decline in federal funding. And so, you know, it's really important to kind of keep closer tabs and monitoring, you know, the funding that's going into the VA, considering that, you know, there are eighteen thousand veterans on Guam, you know, really, we need to do more to support this agency and provide the direct services that are much needed. So, yeah, I agree. If there's still money available, you know, we need to give it to, we need to release that. And I'm in full support of this bill as well. And I look forward to this being part of the budget bill. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I certainly want to thank everyone who's come to testify, you know, our veterans are obviously a very important part of our community. And, you know, it's unfortunate that all these years later, we still have the very same complaints with regards to maintenance of the cemetery and getting the support services. And, you know, we continue to see this whole process politicized, and we're tripping over each other to make sure we get to, you know, get as much resources there. And yet, as time goes on, it's the same old story. I look forward, I look forward to when you can call and have the proper representatives, including the head of the Veterans Affairs Office here, so that we can have that open dialogue and discussion, and let's get a good gauge of where things are and why certain things are not happening. I mean, we recognize the amount of, not just to support our veterans, who are loved ones in our families, but, but yes, the amount of revenue, federal revenue that's brought into Guam directly because of our veterans are quite significant, and they support a lot of our families. I mean, my, you know, as I've mentioned, my dad was a combat veteran. He's since passed away, and I make regular visits, you know, to our cemetery to visit him. My godfather was killed in action in Vietnam, is buried there. So I have a lot of personal connection. Someplace I visit on a regular basis. And I know the workers there try and do the best they can, but, you know, we're still not to the standard of what we see and what we see at other veteran cemeteries nationally to get to that standard. I would love that to be a non-issue. And I certainly appreciate the efforts of Senator Tello in introducing this particular bill to bring this issue to light so that we can find out exactly what are the numbers. It's not that complicated to figure out the finances. I mean, just look at your own. It's just government's a little bigger, but it's not that complicated, you know? Certain things need to add up at the bottom line. And if they're not, then why? And, you know, where is the funding going? And let's specify and all know where is the funding lacking? And we agree those are critical areas, and maybe we sacrifice something else to make sure we can properly fund it. Because this should be a non-issue, especially at this stage, especially as we, you know, we've recognized and understand the importance of our veterans in our community and all that they've done, all that they continue to do. And, you know, it's really, it's heart-wrenching to continue to see these issues come up over and over and over again without resolution. And I think the veterans are tired of this issue being politicized, you know? They get tired of, you know, being wined and dined and then left with the bill. And I just don't think that's fair to them. And some of these issues are not insurmountable to address. And I hope certainly you call that hearing, and also, you know, I'm supportive of this bill as a co-sponsor. I hope we also have an opportunity to see this bill get on the floor so that we can remove any restraints with regards to the funding, so that they can maximize and use what they need. And I'm sure this governor, any governor, recognizes the importance of the work of the Veterans Affairs Office will do also what they can to facilitate getting needed funding to the Veterans Affairs Office. So with that, Mr. Chair, I don't have any further comment. Again, thank you to our veterans that have come forth to testify this afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. You know, I did mention already, we're going to end up recessing, and we're going to hear from the VA on the fifteenth, and that'll be at one thirty in the afternoon. And I think we still can make it the session it need be, but we want to get answers. I'm in a serious search for answers. And before I go to an oversight on them, I'd just rather finish it off with this bill and make them answer for this bill, on how this bill is supposed to help them. Because I'm in support of providing whatever it is we're funding. We just did one on the floor. All right, Senator Tello, you want to make a closing, or you want to wait until the fifteenth?
Okay, I'll make it very quick. I just want to thank everyone who's here today. But I just want to, food for thought, as we wait until the fifteenth to hear this, that if we don't do this right now and create this legislation for FY twenty-two, you're looking at twelve thousand dollars a month that will be held from the Veterans Office. That's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of reserve, fifteen percent reserve that the governor is going to set aside. So, Mr. Chair, and everyone here, that's twelve thousand dollars a month that will be withheld from the Veterans Office if we do not put them in this exemption. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Tello. This hearing is, we're going to recess until March fifteenth. And I thank everyone for participating today. I also invite you back. Senator, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Sinagstein, Mr. Kalib, and Mr. Uno, I also invite you back. So that at least, if you're going to provide the same testimony, I prefer you don't repeat it, but you have the opportunity to speak, but we're going to get the VA officer. All right, we're going to get them to participate in the hearing. And with that, this public hearing is on recess. And it's now two forty PM, since it was March, until March fifteenth at one thirty PM. All right, thank you all, and please be safe. And anyone that has any other testimony, like to submit, please submit testimony. Thank you. Take care.